Councilmember Volin.
Yes, thank you. Could you, Mr. Kelson, speak generally about how the ability to read all meters in the city remotely in a few minutes has translated to savings around CBU?
The obvious one is we don't have meter readers driving around all the time. And burning gasoline, driving trucks, going door to door. And those, and what that means is, is two things. First of all, we're not spending the money on the fuel and the maintenance. We're reducing wear and tear on vehicles. We're reducing the number of times a truck rolls. But the other thing it's doing for us is there are utilities, like a lot of things, there's always more to do than, than you can get done. So what, what happens is there are things that either just get, maybe they get left out because of triage, or maybe they just get set aside and, and, and we don't get around to them. Well, that sort of thing costs money in the long run. And maybe not in the short run, but in the long run, those things are things that you really need to come back into. So having, having fewer people out reading meters means we can have more people doing other things, like we've been painting fire hydrants. Painting fire hydrants seems totally aesthetic, but it's not because it prevents rust and it prevents degradation of that. And also it makes the city look like it's paying attention to things when, when, when our fire hydrants aren't rusty. So we've been doing some of those kinds of things. Generally speaking, we can pick up things that we wouldn't have done that might cost us a lot of money down the road.
This is a brief question. One, one more, Mr. Sims, thank you. Should we expect to see the water main replacement line on, in the budget after 2025 be no less than $3 million a year? I mean, like, are you ramping up to that? It's going to stay $3 million or more?
That's our plan, yes, to ramp it to 3 million. And then presume if, we'll review to see if we've achieved the 100-year replacement schedule. And if we have, then that 3 million would grow with inflation. It wouldn't be growing in real terms in the future.
And on the, the, on, for people who look at the bill rather than the, just the water line or the wastewater line, it may be 21% increase for the water line. But how would, much would you say the average bill will go up as a result of this?
About, about $3 for an average customer, between $3 and $4 for the average customer.
Which is about 6%, 10%? What roughly?
Oh, of the total bill? Total, the sewer part of the bill, and Laura knows this better than I do, but the sewer part of the bill is actually approximately 1 and 1/2. Is that right, Laura? Can you join us? The sewer part is like 1 and 1/2 times as big as your water bill. Is that right?
That's right.
Sorry, that ball part. Yeah, so, so yeah, it's more like maybe 6% or 6 or 7% for your total bill.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo, then Councilmember Isabel P. Mon Smith.
Mr. Kelson, I stepped out for a minute, so I hope this isn't a redundant question. But in your presentation, you showed that the residential user is using per unit, is paying more than industrial, commercial, or Indiana University. And this tends to even it a bit in terms of its percent rate increase. Is there a goal eventually to make them commensurate, to make it, to even it entirely?
Yes, actually, the, over the two phases of this rate request, we would have the, all of the cus, all of the customer classes except residential and irrigation would be at cost of service. Irrigation would still be well below, and residential would still be a little bit above. We didn't want to take the full step for irrigation. First of all, it's 164%. That's just a huge increase. But, and when you look at who's paying that, it's, it's IU, the city parks, the county parks, and, and MCCSC are the biggest, are the biggest ones. So that's just a huge increase. But moreover, the, the price, you know, the, the demand is inelastic. So what, what you do expect is going to happen is that, is, is there, it's over, there's going to be some elasticity in the, in the, in the demand. So if the price goes up, especially if the customers anticipate that in the future it's going to go up again, irrigation users are going to have the opportunity to make changes and make improvements to bring that more into line. Because what happens, an awful lot of that difference between the residential price and the irrigation price is the fact that we have to have our system sized, especially the plant. It has to be sized to handle the irrigation demand that only happens in the summer. And, and so if we were pricing everything out, as Mark had pointed out, if you're pricing everything out based on the average and leaving out those peaks, you're, you're subsidizing the peak by, by everyone else. So the idea is that over time, if, if increases in the, in the, in the irrigation rate may lead to less consumption for, on the irrigation side, which would smooth out that, the peak in the summertime, reducing the size of that peak will tend to change the distribution and the cost of service analysis. So we don't want to overshoot on, on that rate change. Because what, what may happen is if you raise it the full amount, and then everybody starts conserving like crazy, well, then we may come back two years from now, or three years from now, and discover that we're now undercharging residential because we're overcharging irrigation in comparative terms.
I see. Mr. President, I have one other question. Shall I wait?
Please go ahead. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith is next.
Okay, then I'll ask, so, Mr. Kelson, government, county and city government use about 22% of the electricity in our community, and that translates to greenhouse gas emissions. And as I recall, the utilities department uses the lion's share of electricity just by, out of necessity. Are we reducing energy use, electricity use commensurate with our stated goals? And could you maybe address how things are going in terms of utilizing the waste, the waste treatment plants, in terms of anaerobic digester, and whether that's feasible, whether that's continuing the work on that?
So there's a few things, a few answers to that. The first one is, we do take steps to, to, to do, we've done a lot of lighting improvements in the first place. So that's, that's taken a bite. We've also installed solar at several, several of our facilities. At the water plant, there's not as big an area for the array, and we have to pump the water up a big hill and then all the way to town. So it's, it's, we've taken a bite, but not a huge bite in electrical demand at Monroe. At the wastewater plants, at Dillman, we have taken a sizable bite by, by the solar panels at the plant. The other thing that's happening there is we're in the middle of a huge renovation project that's going to modernize that plant, modernize the controls for aeration, which will keep us from using more electricity than we need to. Right now, we don't have closed-loop control for aeration. So what happens is we tend to over, tend to use more oxygen than you absolutely have to. So with, with improved controls and with improved blowers, we're going to be able to cut that down. And we think it's going to be in round numbers, maybe the 10 or 15% reduction in the energy use for, for aeration at the Dillman plant. Of course, we still have pumps, but aeration is the biggest consumer at Dillman. And it is the largest consumer in, in the county. So plant renovations, efficiency improvements in our equipment, and ultimately, if we can get to the point where that, if that summer peak or the day-to-day or the week-to-week peak can be, can be smoothed out a little bit, we can also take some steps to, to smooth out the, the distribute, the delivery of water from the plant to the, to the city. So there's, as we go, as we go forward, we can continue to make efficiency improvements throughout the system. Now, as for anaerobic digestion, which is, I apologize, it's, is really kind of a wastewater, a wastewater topic, but it's, it's an interesting one. At Dillman, it's, it's proven to not be cost-effective, and that service for it would be just enormous. But we are working with, with the ESD, Alex Crowley and his, his team, to look at an alternative that would be focused on food waste, other compostable, organic wastes, streams, and wastewater waste from the sludge from the Blutcher Pool Plant, and possibility of doing land application in the long term. So we are looking into a smaller-scale anaerobic process there, and leaving the Dillman anaerobic process for perhaps one day when we have to expand that plant again to, from 20 to 25 MGD. At that point, we'd have to do major plumbing changes at the plant to achieve it, and that seems to be the natural time.
Thank you for that very thorough answer.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, I had a question about the monthly surcharges for Fire Protection Service in the different customer classes. Can you explain what that cost covers? And then, in particular, I'm interested in why the amount for IU seems to be decreased with this ordinance?
It basically pays for the fire hydrants. In short, just the shortest answer is that it pays for fire hydrants and the service of the fire hydrants. IU is different from any of our other customers. Not only they're our largest customer, but we sell water to them at a number of master meters. And then most of their fire hydrants are actually maintained by them. So we, we charge them for the meat, for the fire hydrants that we provide, but we don't charge them for the fire hydrants that they provide.
So why is this charge being decreased in the ordinance before us tonight?
Mark can take that one.
A lot of it has to do, and with the way the study was completed last time, there's what's called demand factors that are used in the calculation based on the size of the meters. And when we calculated the demand factor, I don't know if it's so much that the overall cost went down, as much as is, and some of them, the demand factors that were originally used in the study like 25 years ago may not have been the same as we're using today. So there was some shifting around of that cost.
So would you say that the, the proposed cost of 1,0731 for the IU master meter is, is closer to the actual cost to the, to the utility?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, there, there are some factors that have changed. I mean, WWI changed our standards on some, and that could be part of what occurred also.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to public comment, do we have any other second round questions from council colleagues? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Lacy, how many do we see for public comment?
Let's see, I, I presently see two.
Okay, thank you. Can we start with Ms. Washburn?
We can, and I'm going to ask Mr. Lucas to share his screen. And I believe that Ms. Washburn should be able to unmute herself now.
Ms. Washburn, thank you for your patience.
Hi.
You, you'll have five minutes or so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lucas? Okay, great. Hi, my name's Sandy Washburn. Thank you for your service and your time today. And Mr. Kelson, thank you very much for that presentation. And let me just start by saying, I, I didn't realize from the notice that was sent in the mail, the compartmentalization, water service, sewer, storm. And I came in 2018 to talk about the storm sewer rate, and I, my presentation is kind of about that today. So I'm at 613, it's the lowest point in Prospect Hill. The picture on your left is in front of my house, right, the alley to the right. And then you see the back of my house on the right. Next slide. These are storm sewer drains that are at the corner of Fairview and Fourth. There are three altogether, and I've shown you pictures of two of them. Yes, they're storm drains underneath those water, the water and debris. It's always like this. Next slide. So you can see I cleaned out the southwest corner, and there's still a lot of mud. I haven't gotten it all. And, you know, there's a lot of debris. I do this a lot. I've been out of town for four days. I went down there today, completely covered up. Next slide. This is Maple, which is a block and a half down. And there are two storm drains. You can't really see them, but the right at the corner here. And the street debris causes the water to completely bypass the drain on the southwest corner and almost completely bypass the southeast corner drain. You can see the water running down the, the center of the street. And this happens all the time. And next slide. There are no storm drains on West Third to East, or West of Maple. And sorry, Mr. Lucas, I didn't realize that. I thought you had the updated presentation. So I asked Phil Peeden to pull a map of storm sewers in Prospect Hill. And from our house at Fourth, all the way up to the crest of the hill, which is just past Prospect, and all the way to the cemetery, no storm sewers, zero. So all this water comes down to Fourth Street. And when they put the curbs on in the neighborhood, it just all channels down Third Street and then on to Fourth Street. Next slide. So, you know, at the vote for the last increase, Mr. Kelson assured me that more employees would be hired, and the storm drains would be cleaned more often. And I've seen absolutely no evidence of this. I do see ads in the paper for volunteers to adopt a drain. And I just want to say, these storm sewer drains are too important to leave to volunteerism. They take on all the water of Prospect Hill. So, you know, I'm happy to hear about the smart meters and the extra staff. And I really hope this means that the storm drains will get cleaned off. I also really think the streets need to be cleaned better. When I lived in Ann Arbor, you know, one day a month, we couldn't park on the street, and they clean the streets. So thank you for your time today. I, I wanted to say I'm really against the water rate increase, and I really didn't realize that was for water service. But I feel like we had a, a storm water increase in 2018, and I certainly have not appreciated any part of that. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Washburn. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Keith Thompson. And I believe they're unable to, they're able to unmute now.
Mr. Thompson, are you ready?
Yes.
All right, you have about five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, again, my name is Keith Thompson, and I do work for Indiana University. I serve the university. I'm the Assistant Vice President for Facility Operations and Energy Management Utilities. And I serve all seven campuses throughout the state. I do want to thank you for allowing me to speak today, President Sims and council. And we, we, Indiana University, we appreciate all the hard work that CBU has put in to putting this capital plan together. I've actually spoken at several of the CBU meetings, expressing IU's concerns about this rate increase to the university. Indiana, Indiana University understands that we're looking at a 40% rate increase, which is significant to the largest customer for CBU. And we understand that'll come in two phases, if approved, before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. You know, in, in general, IU is in favor of infrastructure improvements. Our president, IU President Michael McRobbie, and the Board of Trustees have stood behind infrastructure improvements on the university campus for the last, for the past decade. So we understand what, what is involved to get infrastructures improved. IU's water infrastructure is only as good as CBU's water infrastructure. That is, we, we buy all our water from CBU, and so we need to make sure that both of the infrastructures are in good working order to be successful. And we support water rate increases that are prudent for infrastructure improvements. However, IU strongly objects to the large rate increase and the assumption that Indiana University is not currently paying our fair share of CBU water infrastructure costs. We have reviewed the consultants' reports, and we don't feel the analysis that was performed, performed therein, and the proposed rate and rate structure takes into account IU's substantial $15 million plus of water infrastructure improvements on our campus. We just don't feel like our infrastructure is being credited back to the service to Indiana University, and we think that warrants further investigation. You know, as, as a partner with the city, Indiana University has made numerous improvements to city streets and during our infrastructure projects, and IU's efforts have not been accounted for in the proposed cost of service analysis that are provided here this evening. We have, Indiana University has made numerous capital investments in our water infrastructure over the years, but we do not want to continue to make these water system improvements and also pay a high CBU water infrastructure, much higher rates. We, we can't do both. We can't make these investments on our campus and pay a 40% rate increase. We have, we have offered to work more closely with CBU, but we haven't recently seen any, any proposed solutions. You know, we've offered to share our resources with CBU, and, you know, we had a great discussion this evening about, you know, the AMI system, the advanced metering infrastructure. We offered, Indiana University also has a smart system. We have census, radio towers on top of Valentine and Agamond. We offered to share that infrastructure with CBU, but CBU wanted, wanted to build their own infrastructure so they could read their own meters. But we have the same system. We've had that system for years, and we're just looking for creative ways to keep the cost down for everybody in the city of Bloomington. So we are looking for other creative ways that we could work with CBU to, to keep the rates down for all customers. Indiana University, we understand things cost money, but a 40% rate increase, we cannot immediately pass those increased costs on to our students. We truly hope to, to start a dialogue with the city to possibly find solutions to keep, you know, these costs down and reasonable for all customers. But at a 40% rate increase level, IU intends to intervene at the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, and we likely will hire technical experts to evaluate, you know, the revenue requirements of CBU, their capital improvement plan and the timing thereof, and the cost of service study, and specifically the allocation factors used in that cost of service study. We, we will, we will go before the IORC and attempt to look at, look at all of those individual reports and see how they impact Indiana University. We will, Indiana University believes that the water rate case should be equitable to all rate pairs in Bloomington, and we do not believe a substantial rate increase to IU is equitable as currently proposed in Ordinance 21-09.
Mr. Thompson, you've gone over five minutes. Are you about to finish up?
I have one last thing for president.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank you, sir, for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. Ms. Lacy, do we have any other?
I believe that Mr. Lucas has a comment that was forwarded to him.
Okay. Yes, thank you. This is a comment from Dave Askins with the B-Square Beacon. Mr. Askins says, "The Be Clear Water Main Brake Data Set used to have a bunch of columns like temperature, time of day, pipe material, estimated amount of water loss, and kind of break. It was one of my favorite data sets in all of Be Clear. Now, starting today, it looks like there's not really a data set. There's just a bar chart showing the number of breaks per month and a map showing the locations of breaks. The chart and map are great, but I really miss all the other data. I miss the ability to visualize all that data in the way I want. I hope that there are plans to improve the city's storm water infrastructure to handle all of my bitter tears of disappointment over this. More seriously, I'm hoping this can be one, one of those both-and-type situations. Raw data plus bar charts and maps. Thanks." And that is the comment.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else on the horizon, Ms. Lacy?
I do not see any other hands raised, and I do not have any messages.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll return to council for final comments. Do we have any council member, Rallo?
Mr. President, could we follow up with a couple of questions before we go to comments?
I think you can. I don't know if there's any, do we have any, any other councilmembers that have questions? Proceed, Councilmember Rallo.
Well, we had two interesting public comments that I'd like to give Director Kelson a chance to address. Maybe, maybe we could begin with Mr. Thompson's objection to the rate structure, and here is Mr. Kelson's response to that.
Well, my, my response to that is that the industry standard methodologies were used. The allocation factors have been published. It's, certainly, it's possible that another contractor would come up with a different set of allocation factors. That certainly could occur. The thing about, about accounting for infrastructure costs, we, we don't, we sell water to the meter. We don't sell water to the buildings at any of our customers' facilities. So the, anything, it's just like a customer's, the service line from the meter to your house, that's yours, that's not ours. We've sold water to your meter, not to your house. And that goes for large infrastructure and large facilities, just like it does for small ones. But that said, the, we've, we've had a good working relationship with the folks at IU, and I'm certain that if, that over, over the next few months, that as we're going through the IORC process, if, certainly if, if, if the university brings some specific questions or some specific concerns to light regarding specific allocation factors, we can certainly review how they, how that impact will happen. And I'm certain that the commission will do that as well. So that it is part of the process, and I, I certainly wouldn't criticize anyone at any, any, at any of our large customers for, for wanting to, to have their own, you know, their own separate opinion or a second opinion, and then regarding the way the allocations were done. But to our ability to, to understand them, the assumptions make sense. But I think that this is all part of the process of doing a cost of service analysis. It's part of the reason that Bloomington hasn't done a cost of service rate-making process in a quarter of a century. Because these, these, these things are difficult and challenging, but certainly will work with anybody who, who, who has any specific, specific identified concerns.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was it moving? Any other questions, Councilmember Rallo?
Okay. Well, if, if, if Mr. Kelson, if Mr. Kelson wants to address the stormwater clearing.
Stormwater.
Perhaps now is an appropriate time, since that's the topic.
Well. Well.
The drains.
We're talking about the water, I think. Go ahead, Councilmember Rallo.
Well, you're right. It's tangential, but there was a stormwater rate increase. And a customer asks about the infrastructure and the personnel that was going to be applied. And so I wanted to give Mr. Kelson a chance to address that, since we're considering another rate increase, although not stormwater in this case. But, Mr. Kelson, do you?
Well, we did just what we said. We established a green infrastructure group. One of the things they do is assist with inlet cleanouts. We have thousands of inlets in the city. One of the challenges at Ms. Washburn's property is that years, if you look at the old maps, that was once a pond. So it's, as she says in her presentation, it's the low spot in Prospect Hill. So it's going to be a challenge to keep it dry. Now, we don't do street sweeping at CBU. That's not, that's done by Public Works. And I'm not ponting off the concern on them. I think it's something that CBU can work together with Public Works to see about improving the street cleaning in a number of places. We do have this problem in lots of places in the city where we're Tree City USA, which means we're Leaf City USA. And we're going to always have a challenge with this. But we will redouble our efforts. I did have a crew out in Ms. Washburn's neighborhood last week. At the time they were there, the inlets were clean. But I don't know who had cleaned them or whatnot. But certainly, we can review the stormwater infrastructure there, as she said, pointing it out that she'd spoken with Phil Peet, and he's the one I would speak to about this. So I will definitely follow up with Ms. Washburn in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Councilmember Rallo asked the questions I wanted to ask. I guess I would just say, does it bother you that we don't have more regular street sweeping? Where people have to move their cars and the like?
Well, on behalf of our MS4 program, I would certainly love to have more street sweeping. But it's an expensive operation.
Of course.
To do that and requires a lot of equipment. But yes, anything that keeps the streets cleaner will keep stormwater infrastructure cleaner and reduce. One of the other problems with being at the bottom of a watershed is that you get all this, in addition to the leaves, you get other debris that actually gets down into the drain. And eventually, it can clog up and reduce the effectiveness of it. But we'll definitely get over and take a look. And we do look for solutions when we get complaints. And we do, we will look things over again in the coming weeks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Oh, I didn't have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had a hand up. Sorry. Councilmember Flaherty.
My questions have been asked as well. Thank you.
Love it when a plan comes together. Okay, do we have any other questions? Okay, we will now go to final comments. Do we have any final comments from any of our council colleagues? Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I guess just first, as a preliminary matter, I'll note that I'm going to support this ordinance and would be happy to vote on it tonight. I know we didn't have a previous committee hearing. So, you know, if there were a lot of questions open, I don't think it was without question that we could postpone to another meeting. But I'd be ready to vote tonight and consider the question. I appreciate all the work that City Bloomington Utility Staff has put in over the last many years, really bringing us up to speed on a number of fronts, getting us on a schedule to be able to replace pipe on a sustainable timescale. That's really important. And also the efforts to move us to a more equitable rate structure, in particular, as it relates to cross subsidies from residents to other users. My hunch, I appreciate Mr. Thompson speaking to his comments too and respect their ability to go before IURC to share their concerns as well. But my impression, and what Mr. Kelson shared as well, is that investments made by anyone beyond the meter are not something that CBU should be in the business of crediting or using as a metric to reduce someone's rates. Just like I live in a condo building. If we had to improve some sort of infrastructure beyond the meter in our units, we wouldn't get credit for that either. So, of course, I use a much bigger scale. But I think that the same reasoning applies. So I appreciate the conversation around that. And that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further, Councilmember Scambolari?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kelson, to you and your staff, thank you. It was a very thorough report. And you made it accessible. And I'm grateful for that, because I have a sense of how much specialized knowledge goes into what you do. I really have been concerned about our water infrastructure lately. Water mains and the water main breaks we've had, I think, underscore that. I am glad we have the goal of having a hundred-year replacement cycle. My hope is we can get that number even lower at some point. I also appreciate greatly the move toward cost of service pricing. I've discussed this increase in a constituent meeting. It's been on my website. It's been in the monthly newsletter that I do. And I think most, I've maybe gotten a dozen comments. I think two of those were, oh, gosh, another rate increase. Please, not now. We're in a pandemic. All the rest were, well, yeah, everything else has gone up in price in the last five years. I guess water gets more expensive, too. And residents were very understanding about that. So, again, thank you for the good work you've done in laying out this case, and I'll be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further final comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kelson. Really thorough presentation. And I appreciate all the outreach that you've done in the days before this as well. It seems to me that IU has been benefiting from a rate structure in the past that has transferred costs per unit mostly to residents. And so evening that for equity seems to be obviously paying more for IU at this point, but they benefited in the past. And this is a better situation for residences. I appreciate your efforts on conservation and the capital improvements. I too think that the cost of service pricing is a very good idea, and I appreciate you implementing and continuing that. And I also appreciate your efforts to keep these rate increases occurring at a regular pace, because I think that otherwise it becomes a very unstable situation in terms of revenue. And it also, you know, applies eventually a large sticker shock. So this makes much more sense to proceed in this process. So thank you very much. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said. They've all made excellent points. The only thing I would add is that I think, I'm a little chagrin that I haven't thought about street sweeping very much and that I think maybe it's time that the city thought about doing a little bit more. Because we don't, in fact, require people to move their cars in neighborhoods once a month to clean the streets. At least, I don't recall seeing that program ever. And so, you know, I think it's something that we need to think about. I don't know how to do it, but it's on my radar now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no more final comments, I will say this. I am very happy, as you all know, and the council's liaison to the Utility Service Board. And before that, I sat on the Utility Service Board, as did some of my colleagues. So seeing the plannings that have gone on over, I don't know, Vic, I was even there before you got there. But seeing how that has evolved over the years is important to me and I think to our community. I will also say thank you again for the cost of study service. And for one other, for one reason or another, part of what we're doing and part of what this is all about is playing catch-up with our infrastructure. We're catching up, for whatever reason. I won't get into it. But I think we have a good plan to get caught up where we can. It'll take a little while, but I am encouraged with that plan. So seeing no further comments from our council members, are we ready for the question? Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Scambolari?
Yes.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was adopted 9-0. We do have more legislation this evening. Mr. Parliamentarian?
Yes, President Sims, I move that ordinance 2110 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volan?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
And Scambolari?
Yes. I think we.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like I'm hearing things a little bit. I'm sorry. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that ordinance 21-10 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 2010, "An ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the City of Bloomington, Indiana of certain extensions and improvements to the city's waterworks utility, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks utility and other related matters." The synopsis is as follows. "This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue one or more series of its waterworks revenue bonds of 2022 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,200,000. The 2022 bonds will be issued to finance the costs of design, engineering, acquisition, construction, equipping, and improvement of capital projects related to the Monroe Water Treatment Plant and distribution system of the waterworks utility and pay costs of issuance of the bonds. There is no committee recommendation."
Mr. President?
I'm sorry, I muted. Councilmember Flaherty, sorry about that.
You're okay. I move ordinance 2110 be adopted.
Second.
Okay, thank you. And we have present again for this, Mr. Kelson. I'm assuming you have Mr. Crowe with you as well. And will he be presenting?
Yes, I have with us, we have Jennifer Wilson from Crowe and Buzz Crowe from Crowe &amp; Associates. And they can tell you the details of the bond proposal. As I mentioned in the presentation, the larger presentation, the bonds will support the capital investment plan in 2022 through 2024. So I'll leave it to Jennifer and Buzz.
Thank you. Please present.
Jennifer, ladies first, if you'd like to go first.
Very good. Thank you, Buzz. Yeah, so this bond ordinance supports what we had put into the rate study of funding some of the projects that Vic has discussed. And so this just sets out the parameters of how that bond sale will occur once the IURC will be bringing it in accordance with our rate case. So in order to do that, the bond ordinance needs to be passed now and be presented within the rate case. I see to you, Buzz, if you have anything else to add.
I would just add, and I think, I'll try to echo some of Vic's comments earlier, that this is all part of the process. We're authorizing the enabling ordinance for this bond issue because depending IURC case, obviously, lots of things, there's lots of water under the dam here yet to be had with respect to the upcoming issues that the commission will ultimately decide. And after the rates are approved, there may be some right sizing potentially, I suppose, on the scope of the projects. But currently, they're anticipating about a $15.8 million project, total project cost. We've got a parameter that's about, you know, about $1.4 million greater than that. So if we do have, you know, bids come in high, this or that, there is some wiggle room there. And we've got good, solid bond coverage projections in the rate study. And the way the phase-in occurs, it appears that, you know, the bond payment would be really just covering probably the interest during construction for the first phase. And then when the full phase, phase two hits, it'd be when the full bond payments would kick in and that replacement allowance goes up about $1 million, I think, in phase two as well. So, but that also keeps the coverage ratio strong, both during the construction period and after the project's completed. So we feel that there's adequate wiggle room in the sizing parameters. And we just need to, part of the process is getting through the commission. And that's always an exciting time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more comments from Ms. Wilson, Mr. Kelson, and Mr. Crowe?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we'll go to our council members for questions. Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public for any public comments. I will remind everyone that, or I'm sorry, our public, that you can indicate you would like to public speak by using a raised hand function in Zoom, or you can send us a message in chat. I will further remind you that if there's more than one person on the device that you're using, please let us know, so we can acknowledge everyone and ensure that they can comment. Ms. Lacy, do you see anyone?
There are no hands raised, and I don't have any messages in chat.
Okay, give it just a second. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to council for any other questions or final comments that they may have. Okay, going good. I do have one comment. I think in this particular ordinance, 2110, we were able to see this, I think, in part of the work session and some other information and what was in our packets. So I think the thoroughness of that presentation, that information, is another one of the reasons why this portion is going so smoothly and there's not a lot of questions, because many of them were answered so thoroughly in the past. So I want to thank Mr. Kelson and his staff and the consulting team for doing that. So before we move forward, any final comments from council colleagues at all? Okay, seeing none. Ready for the question? The clerk, please call the roll.
They can hear me. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin? Okay, we seem to have lost Councilmember Volin. Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and ordinance twenty one dash ten is adopted eight zero. Okay, moving down the agenda.
Thank you so much.
You, thank you all. We do have one more piece of legislation for second reading. Mr. Parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty one oh eight be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin? Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. It has been moved in second, and that was our pass eight zero to be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance twenty one oh eight to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning eighty seven acres from planned unit development to mixed use corridor regarding thirty one hundred West Fullerton Pike, Bill C. Brown revocable trust petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance twenty one oh eight would rezone eighty seven acres from planned unit development to mixed use corridor. The land use committee recommendation was due pass zero three one.
Member Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty one oh eight be adopted.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved in second. And before we move forward, I will make note that, and correct me if I'm wrong, council staff, that there was no recommendation from the plan commission on this ordinance.
That is correct.
That is correct. And I would also further ask the land use committee chair if they wish to give a report this evening.
Yes, sure.
Is that, is that proper? I'm sorry, looked like I got you by surprise, I don't intend to.
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the land use committee met last Wednesday, March tenth, for three hours. And about seventy five minutes of that was spent on this particular ordinance, which is a rezone request for a parcel of land on Fullerton Pike. And the request is to rezone from a planned unit development to mixed use corridor. And we heard from Eric Grulick, who I'm sure we'll hear from here in a minute as well. And he talked about the comprehensive plan calling for employment use on this parcel. And therefore, the staff would recommend an employment zone rather than the mixed use corridor. And after discussion, we, the committee members, most, the committee members felt that there was not a substantial reason to override what our comprehensive plan has dictated for this area, which is an employment use. And so the vote was zero three one, one abstention, three against, to send this back to the council. Or that was our vote on the project, and we sent it back to the council with that vote. So with a negative vote. I think that's all I have. If, do any committee members want to add anything?
Nope, seeing none. Thank you, that was with a negative due pass recommendation. Okay, Mr. Grulick, are you present and ready to present?
Yes, I am ready. Hopefully, everybody can see my screen.
Yes.
Great. So, so as mentioned, this is a request from Bill C. Brown Revocable Trust for a property at thirty one hundred West Fullerton Pike. This property is on the very southern, very southwestern portion of the city, the very south limits. And it's approximately eighty seven acres in size, and it's zoned as a planned unit development. This property was initially rezoned to the planned unit development in the late nineteen eighties for primarily industrial uses, some manufacturing uses. There have been various approvals done over the years. Some residential approvals were carried out in the late nineteen nineties, as well as an approval for a golf course. However, no activity has occurred on this site.
Talking.
It still sits undeveloped. So the petitioner is requesting to rezone this from the planned unit development designation to the mixed use corridor designation in order to allow for some better marketability and reuse of this property. So as I mentioned, the P U D was approved with mostly industrial uses. So this is the use list from that P U D. You can see various offices, warehouses, manufacturing uses, industrial kind of uses. So this property was actually slated for one of the P U Ds to be removed as part of the citywide rezoning efforts. And the staff had proposed to rezone this to the mixed use employment district, kind of as a result of the useless that you see on the screen that was approved with the P U D, and also because of the comprehensive plan designation for this site as employment center. So the petitioner is proposing to rezone this to the mixed use corridor district. So in the packet, as well as on the slide here, it's kind of a side by side comparison between the mixed use corridor district and the mixed use employment district. The petitioner has proposed to exclude ten or so uses from the mixed use corridor district. That would certainly be low employment generating uses. So again, this is kind of a side by side comparison of the uses that are allowed in the M C that would be allowed if this petition were approved. The land uses here that are emboldened with the asterisk are the ones that the petitioner is proposing to remove. So the remaining ones would all be uses that would be allowed if this petition was approved. So one of the concerns that the staff and the plan commission has had regarding this petition and specifically the list of uses for the mixed use corridor district is not just that the designation from the comprehensive plan encourages this as employment, but that by allowing this to have the wider list of uses that you find in the M C zoning district, it really takes away from the possibility that this could be generating employment uses on the site. So this is kind of a current aerial of the property. In two thousand and fifteen, there was an approval that was done in order to allow for some of the soil from the site to be sold to Endot for use of the I sixty nine project. At that time, we evaluated what would be required to be preserved and saved on the site for tree canopy, riparian buffer, and carst features, so that was all set aside. So you can see the areas that were cleared out. So then it basically resembles the developable portion of this site. Here's just kind of a close up view of that. So it's about fifty percent of the site that was set aside in preservation, and about, about half of that that is developable. So the comprehensive plan, as you can see here, this site is at the lower portion of the screen, the south end of the side, south end of the city. The light blue designates the employment center areas. So there aren't many areas of the city that are set aside for employment center or that designation within the comprehensive plan. You've got some areas along Fountain Drive, along the northwest side. You've got the areas within the Landmark Business Center, areas within the Thompson P U D, and then the areas along the southwest side of town, where you've got Southern Indiana Medical Park, Who's Your Energy? And then the area to the south of Tap Road that includes Southern Indiana physicians, and then this particular site. So this is certainly noteworthy in its location in that it is directly adjacent to I sixty nine, in that there was a specific exit that was installed on Fullerton Pike for this site, as well as for Fullerton Pike connection with I sixty nine. So this provides a very unique opportunity for ease of access, mostly from I sixty nine, obviously, and surrounding areas, residents within Bloomington, as well as the overall region itself. So one of the things, there are many things about this petition that certainly need to be evaluated. The most important of those is the comprehensive plan designation, as well as some of the key notes that the comprehensive plan has for the employment center. You know, with the employment center district designation, certainly the comprehensive plan says that the focus should be on corporate headquarters, major employers, and light, high tech manufacturing uses, that this district may produce the greatest amount of large traffic, truck traffic in comparison to other uses, and will require access along the roadway network. As I mentioned, the location on I sixty nine and the designated exit for Fullerton certainly provides that ease of access. So that, that's an important aspect to note, as well as comprehensive plan notes that employment centers, by their very nature, and the land uses within them can certainly generate a lot of noise and vibration and other impacts. And so it's important to locate these on large acres, which is very large in size. There are interstate to the west. So with that, you know, the comprehensive plan designates this as employment center. You know, as I mentioned, the staff is proposing to rezone this to the mixed use employment district in keeping with the comprehensive plan designation. So when the plan commission heard this case, there was certainly a mix of opinions on the site. There were a lot of plan commission members that did feel some sympathy to trying to increase the usability of the site, since it sat empty for thirty years or so. However, there were also a large contingency that really felt like it was important to keep and maintain the designation and encouragement of the comprehensive plan to have this as employment. And so the plan commission voted six to two to one to forward this to the common council with no recommendation. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grulick. I think I, do we have any comments from the petitioner as well?
Mr. Sims, Mike Carmen?
Yes, I was asking Mr. Grulick if the petitioner had anything to say, and I see your hand up, so please proceed.
Thank you. Mike Carmen, representing the petitioner. Petitioner is the property owner of the Bill Bound Revocable Trust, that'd be Mr. Bill Brown. Most of you should know Bill, he's been a long time resident and longtime successful developer of areas in Bloomington. And you can say that with some pride. You may not remember that Park Thirty Seven was his. Park Forty Eight, which I consider one of the real crown jewels of the community, it was his development. He didn't build the Cook Plant, but he certainly did put the Park Forty Eight project together. You recently heard the Century Village, the last, what we believe will be the last phase of the buildout of the Century Village P U D underway. So he has this project left, and certainly not mean to disparage Bill, but he's at a point where he'd like to see this and build out and developed in his lifetime. And I say that because he's been on this ground for thirty five years. As this, this Fulton Pike P U D is about thirty five years old now. And Bill would like to see it done, he'd like to see it done responsibly, and he'd like to be the one to make sure that happens. So you've heard from Eric's comments, you heard from Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments about concerns for the comp plan. And that's what I want to address in several comments tonight, or specific comments, that it's been suggested by those comments, and I think when you read the staff report, that this petition to rezone this to M C, mixed use quarter, is in direct conflict with the comp plan. And I don't think that's correct. I don't think you'll conclude that when we get done here this evening either. It's, is it on, we used to say all fours all squared up with it? No, but then I don't know what any petition would be. Comp plan's comprehensive, and as all plans, it suffers from the one overarching problem, which is extremely aspirational, with lots of different objectives, lots of concerns, lots of policies, and is very, very difficult when you have something as broad ranging as the originally the G P P, the growth policies plan, and now the comp plan, to find anything that's going to hit all those buttons in one petition. But we think we hit a lot of them, and we think we hit a lot of them that it concludes it is within line of what the comp plan envisioned for this property. So I'll be a little more specific on that, if I may do this right, see if I can share screen. Sorry, I had this ready to go. We, sharing screen now, have I done this right, that you can see this on share screen?
No.
Let me try and find it on this share screen, sorry. There we go, I think we got you now, okay?
There we go, thank you.
So Eric showed you a little bit earlier, a list of uses permitted in C zone and compare them with the list, the uses in the M E zone. So to be clear, the city, through the staff's efforts, goes to the plan commission, I believe, it's on March twenty ninth, with the long list of P U Ds, I don't know what that number is, ninety some, I believe, to rezone to various other zones, there's a few of the P U Ds in the city jurisdiction that are not part of that, but overwhelming majority are. The staff's recommendation is for the M E zone on the rezone of this P U D. Mr. Brown, property owner, is asking for M C rather than the M E. So what has happened in the staff reports, presentation, the plan commission, even land use committee last week is to really focus on contrasting the M E use and the M C uses that, because it would seem inevitable that it's going to be one or the other. It's certainly possible for the, this council to deny the rezone and leave it as a P U D. We're not asking for that, but we are asking for the M C zone for some very specific reasons. What you have here are the table uses, what this, it is take what Eric had done and distilled it down to, and formatted it just a little bit differently. If you look at it, all the column from the table uses in the U D O, the M E, mixed use employment, they're all listed here. And then correspondingly, what is allowed in the M C zone on that same line. And what you find, and I'll go down through it just.
Excuse me, Mr. President, could we ask the department to expand the window so we can see?
See if I can do this, get you a better view of this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
So what you see is, this is straight from the table, it just took out all the things that were not common to both. Every one of the M E uses is listed here. On the right hand column are the uses, whether it's allowed or not, in the M C zone. Once you find that everything, we're going to come to one line that's not true, but everything that's allowed in the M E use is also allowed in the M C's classification, with one exception, and it's actually on the next page, this is two pages of uses, I'll come back. You see that they're highlighted in yellow, sorry, lost you. Sorry. That was much newer than this and what I'm showing at the moment. There we go. You see, they're highlighted in yellow, manufacturing light, so P in the M E, not permitted uses in the M C. There's an old cliche, and it has had numerous iterations over the years, some of them somewhat disparaging of classes of people, so try to keep it more generic. So try to keep it more generic, but essentially paraphrased, it would say that. One of the signs of a highly foolish person is to do the same thing over and over and over again and expect a different result. Rezoning this property to ME from the PUD is an act of doing the same thing over and over again. Because it is no, it's almost no change in thirty-five years. Go back to the uses that Eric showed you on the, his slide, here again. The table uses from that. PUD. And you can see, commercial retail, not allowed. Commercial trade, very limited. Commercial wholesale, very, very limited. Get down to the manufacturing uses and what you have here are generally what you're going to find lumped now under the ME of. Of manufacturing light, few of these, what we might have called in years past, heavy, heavy industrial, but it's like machinery tool and die. A few of, for a large part, these are the manufacturing light that the ME would allow. So what the zone is giving that you don't get in the MC zone is a perpetuation of this table of uses. And for thirty-five years, it has not allowed the property to develop. So we're, are we going to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result? Now we keep hearing that I sixty-nine is, has been a game changer. This, suddenly this property is uniquely positioned and therefore it, keep it as is, no changes, keep it as is. And that is no change. Before there was sixty-nine, it was thirty-seven and when it was thirty-seven, that was the arterial road through the community. It's no different. Now we call it sixty-nine, it's a little bit bigger, maybe it's a little bit more far ranging. But it is simply the, remains the arterial highway now through the community. And that was true at this intersection, has been true for thirty-five years and nothing, that has not been sufficient to lure development to this area. So. Moving on. As you look at the history, back in the day, some of you have been around long enough to remember the, the GPP. And how that was brought about and developed, it's Growth Policies Plan. So this next couple of pages come from the Growth Policies Plan. And the Growth Policies Plan, it had areas they called Critical Subareas. This was one of those, that the subareas defined is from Tap Road down to Fullerton. And this area, and you can see it, I've highlighted in yellow, essentially what would be the subject property, this PUD. The area that's north of that is the Medical Park PUD on the south side of Tap Road that is, has developed out. As the plan called for, as the comp plan calls for. Encouraging medical headquarters and corporate headquarters and that's, or medical uses, and that's what you have in that northern part. So we look at Mr. Brown's property and even the back as far as GPP is calling for this. Notice the hash line through there, that's a critical feature. That's the proposed road because that area matches now. This, which is the city's master thoroughfare plan that was back at the time of the GPP. I've circled the area down Tap Road and Fullerton, you can see that same road on there. So we have a piece of property that has, has forever had proposed a major thoroughfare through the property. This was a Tiff district. It's a Tiff district that has never funded, that has never built the road, has never extended any infrastructure. It's a Tiff, has been a Tiff in name and that's as far as it's gone. This again is the Growth Policies Plan. I just want to take a few lines out here and then we'll move on to the comp plan. Because this really set the stage for this property even moving on before the comp plan. But under the paragraph on tent. This site is located north of Fullerton Pike, east of Fort Thirty-seven, which is now sixty-nine, south of Tap Road. So that's the area that we're talking about. I'm sorry, went too far. You're down to that paragraph and. Under the land use policies, up there, maybe better easier to see about the second line of that first bulleted point, medical and corporate offices, land uses are recommended. And that has been developed at the northern part of the, as a separate PUD, but still within this subarea. Light manufacturing and site-serving retail. Go back to the PD list, there's no site-serving retail allowed on that. Go to the ME zone, the site-serving retail, if at all, is, is, would be lumped into what's called small retail, less than five thousand square feet. There's virtually no retail component in the ME zone. And that is the significant issue which we're going to come to again here in a moment. This land has, this area has been studied. Duke Energy has a program. Thing I've heard it referred to as the Cheesy Site Inventory. They do. Intense studies of different potential development areas throughout the state. And in this, this particular study of this property happened in, you can see in twenty-fourteen. In the state of Indiana, one of the sites they chosen to do their study that year was the Fulton Pike. And this page comes out of that, that study by Duke. This site for potential development. And as you can imagine, Duke was looking at, at development from industrial type uses and high employment type uses. You can see the road that, from the master thoroughfare plant and this on there, you can see the preservation area, Eric referred that earlier. That's, that area has been in protected now and has been duly recorded several years ago. A carse conservancy area, so that's not just preservation by title, it is by fact with recorded conservancy. Carst conservancy easement that covers a very large part of this eighty-seven acres. Out of the eighty-seven acres, we're looking at the mobile area in the forty acre range or less, not eighty-seven. But look what Duke has even put into their report. Three acres, three acres, three acres, three acres, four acres, four and a half acres and one large building. That would work out to be a little, looks to be about just a little under twenty acres. Even them in their study, Duke was not looking at a single or even a couple of high. Ticket, high volume employers coming in and developing this site. Didn't project out that was how it was going to develop. And that's the significant issue with the, the multiple. Lots because that becomes a subdivision issue which has significant impact on the ability to ever see this property developed. So this, now we finally get to the comp plan, which you've heard several times and it, it was mentioned that. About, even in the staff report and the page, last page Eric had posted on, on his share screen. Refer to employment centers and that's what you find in the comp plan, discussion of employment centers. So you go down here, a couple of things, Eric pulled out some quotes, some, some comments out of, out of this text and I would. Certainly appropriate, but there are some others that I think bear your consideration as well. So this is talking generically about employment centers. And that in various places had some interesting quotes. You know, it goes through and discusses site design and various other features. You can see. Talking about city contributions and, and getting developing this, as we get down to the land use. Development, and this is under this employment center discussion still. And now we get specific as to this site, second paragraph, right column. Refers to I sixty-nine corridor interchanges, the second paragraph, specific interchanges. For example, Tap Road and Fullerton Pike will take on a more employment center characteristic. Notice it says more employment, didn't say a hundred percent, it's more, more like the employment centers. Will take on a more employment center characteristic with retail acting as an accessory use. We again come back to the plans calling for retail uses at this site. It's a recognition that there is an importance to retail uses. Paired with employment uses, if that's what you call them. And I would submit that some of the, the retail uses are heavy employers. They may not be manufacturing jobs, but they are, they are significant employers, look at our employment base in the community and it's retail and commercial. Carries the, the majority of the load of, of employment base. But even the comp plan recognizes the, the need for, and the importance of retail acting as an accessory use. And that has been our experience with this property. We have a potential use, it is only in the discussion stage, it's certainly not under contract, not. It's no certainty, but that use, which would be characterized as a regional training center. Has made it pretty clear that something like a regional training center to come here. Needs employee, employee type amenities and, and uses onsite. And the couple of things that have come up in those situations, one is a hotel being onsite. This is a regional center, it's going to be drawing people in from other areas. And once the hotel would be looking for a hotel onsite to houses, people rather than sit, have them, drive them up the road some distant place. But a restaurant has come up as being an essential component of that use coming here. And that is, is a major issue. So if you look at the table of uses that Eric showed for the ME, it lists restaurant. But it also lists restaurant as a P with an asterisk. And why, what's the asterisk mean in the? Go down here, you can see on the. Restaurant use there, that you see P permitted. And P in, in MC, P permit, P with the asterisk in the ME. When you read the ordinance, the UDO and find the asterisk reference, what it says is. The restaurant cannot be more than twenty-five hundred gross square feet of floor space. So what do you get with twenty-five hundred gross square feet of floor space? We did a little sampling and whoops, didn't mean to strength that on you. That you, you can find restaurants yourself around them, so these are some you should recognize all these. Cheddar Steck Texas Roadhouse with Charlie's Full Service Sit Down Restaurants. Go down to the bottom of the list. And for under twenty-five hundred gross square feet. These numbers come from the property tax assessment card on, on the, based on dimensions of, of the building, main, one floor only. Not a two-story. So you get a Jiffy Tree, a White Castle and a Dairy Queen. Even to get to the Hardee's, we exceed the twenty-five hundred square feet. We don't get a sit-down restaurant, a full-service restaurant that would, would serve the students, the trainees at that center. Until, at, at all, we don't get it in the ME zone, it does, it's not allowed. And this is not something that can be approved on, on a variance. It's the definition of the use that would require use variance, would, your ordinance even, does not even allow use variances anymore. So, so there's a major concern there and so it's not just that one user. But. Go back here, this again, this, so we're talking about the comp plan and. And some of the comp plan policies, but there, there's more that the city has said in the comp plan about. These types of uses. There's. In the comp plan, there's a line that when it's talking about the employment center, this says, the city must be proactive in extending. Essential services to these districts to support and attract high-quality employers. The essential services that were noted in that, in the comp plan that need, the city should take a proactive hand in were. Were not only the roads, but sewer, water and fiber optic. This property has been left to Mr. Brown to develop. Sewer, water, road, all those things, the comp plan said that the city could, should take a proactive hand in. At an employment center to attract that high-quality employer, the higher employer. Has not happened, is not going to happen, and it's being left to Mr. Brown to do it. And that's tough to do and, and the city regulations make it particularly tough to do. And, and I would submit this, it's going to fall into one of those unintended consequences areas. The city ordinance requires that upon subdivision of the property, and Eric talked about this briefly at the prior meetings, but. On subdivision of this property, it's an eighty-seven acre single parcel now. So even that Duke proposal, multiple three and four acre parcels for development, but. Upon the first subdivision, the road has to be built. Not just, not just shown, not just an easement granted, the road has to be built. The estimate that was given back when we started this petition at current prices, which actually recently have gone up again is. Cost of building materials and I'm sure your public works department's probably complained about the same problem, but the cost of construction of anything just is. Going through the roof right now, but a couple of months ago, the estimate, engineer estimate for this road is two point six million dollars. You cannot sell, subdivide this and carve off a three or four acre piece for the first developer to come in. I don't care if it's an employee, twenty people or fifty people. And put in a two point six or two point seven million dollar road, it just cannot be done. And that, and that's the dilemma that's confronting Mr. Mr. Brown and trying to do anything in this property. Pre-pandemic, we are not seeing people being, come to this community and most communities were having the same issue. The, the large employer of a hundred and fifty, two hundred people, they're just, they're just not out there looking around. But I can tell you, those that are, are looking for shovel-ready ground. This is not shovel-ready ground. This road has to have, this property has to have a road built. Has to have the sewer extended up the line, has to have the water extended up the line. This is not shovel-ready and we're, if we're a community competing with anybody else trying to lure that big. Manufacturing developer employer to the area, it's not going to happen out of private money. We have to put a two point seven million dollar road in before we can get anybody even come and look at the property, let alone get serious about developing it. So, so why does this lead back to the MC? The MC zone provides some flexibility that is not available in the ME, it's not available in the current PUD. The MC zone allows some additional uses. It allows some additional retail uses, allows some additional commercial uses, and that's a significant component. Not only such things as the restaurant for the employee amenities is, is maybe an issue with. The potential development on the training center. But just in terms of spurring activity and generating money to put the road in. It's a, it's a simple fact that. Commercially zoned ground, a ground being sold for commercial purposes will generate a much better purchase price. It's going to take some significant development, even on commercial and retail uses at a higher price. That's going to be able to generate the money to justify and the ability to even to put in a, a road at two point six million dollars and more by the time we get around to it. And that's the road and then we got the other issues of extending sewer lines, sewer and waters down in. In Fulton area, but it has to be run up and extended in throughout the property. So the commercial uses and the retail uses that are available in the MC zone that are not available in the ME have never been available in the PUD. Are game changers. There are what is going to be, allow this property be developed, there's what's going to be allowed this property be developed. On private money, Mr. Brown's money. To be able to fund those infrastructure needs, the Tiff system is not available to do it, so it is, it is private money only. So when you look at this, I would encourage you to, to pay attention to the comp plan. I don't think that this is, we're at odds with the comp plan. It does talk about commercial, industrial users and, and manufacturing type users. But it even recognizes in the comp plan. Commercial centers as, as some of this, it recognizes the need for retail as called accessories. Some of the retail we submit will come out there, would be accessory to other uses, but some of it would be standalone. A full-service restaurant, a sit-down restaurant, it would be a standalone, it's not going to be an accessory to another building or another use. But those are the uses that are going to allow the property be developed. It's been thirty-five years and I keep saying that and that, because it's important. Mr. Brown, Eric made mention and reference, there'd been various proposals to do various things. There've been repeated efforts to find a way to get this property marketed and developed and they just have not panned out and there are lots of reasons. The PUD amendment, a, a number of years ago that allowed for the extended care facility. That, that facility to go in, then there were, it became a financing issue, but there's significant problems. With the cost for the infrastructure that that facility had to put in to be able to develop there and it became a financial impossibility. So despite the PUD amendment to allow the, the care facility, it didn't happen. The, the ME zone allows a hotel, but as a conditional use. Read the two and a half pages in the UDO of conditional use procedures that the hotel would have to jump through and the additional approval processes. Which suggests that there's no guarantee the hotel would be allowed in the ME zone despite it being listed as, in the, at this site, despite the. The. Table uses calling it a conditional use. The MC zone is requested because, for two primary reasons and then I'll, I'll move on. The first one is. Doing due consideration for what is the potential development of the site, the restaurant is a, is a requirement. It is, it is an essential component of the site for that user to come, to come here if we can get that done. No guarantees, but it's, it's very promising and there've been too many conversations not to believe that it's a serious. Possibility. Beyond that one is the flexibility of the commercial retail uses allowed in the MC zone. Would, would be the basis by which this property is going to develop at all. If we have to put a, to, that expensive road in and run the infrastructure in. Upon the very first subdivision, the first carve-out of any development on this. That is not going to happen unless it's a huge development, which is not in the forecast. Or have to juggle balls and get three or four or five small ones lined up, all ready to go at the same time. So that we, it can generate the, the money available to put the road in and that's just not likely to happen. It, this land should not be relegated to dormancy for another thirty-five years. The ME change zone changes nothing. The MC zone is a game changer and it would be the, the impetus to allow this to, to finally get developed. And it should develop. I know there's, there have been some concerns expressed, whether this is sprawl or not, I, I. Personally look at it as an infill, I, Eric emphasized this being on the edge. This on the edge today, but tell me four, four months from now, five months from now. If you haven't taken it, the corporate lines have bumped it out several hundred acres or thousand acres out. And moved that, moved out at half a mile or a mile to the west and this is no longer on the edge, this is getting more into the middle of the corporate limits. Or, or if I'm, I'm misreading the tea leaves on your annexation plans, but if I'm not, then this is not on the edge. If it is on the edge, it's, it's on a short, it's on a temporary basis. So, but again, on behalf of Mr. Brown, we would ask that your consideration for rezoning this. consideration for rezoning this to mixed use quarter. It allows all the ME uses, the vast majority of them. It adds some additional uses for the flexibility that is, it's going to be essential to be able to further develop to see anything happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. Can you clear the screen? Thank you for that presentation. Any other comments from Mr. Gurlik? I don't think so. We went to the petitioner. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. I believe Mr. Crowley is on the call. We've talked a lot about this being mixed use employment. And so I would be interested in his take from an economic development perspective.
Hi, everyone. Alex Rowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. So thanks for the question. You know, it's, it's, it's always a little tough because obviously we are in a weird moment right now. We're trying to figure out what the future looks like. And, you know, it's a little unclear. So I think that certainly, you know, a, a question like this is worth asking on a parcel of land like this. I guess what I would say is a couple of different things. I would say from a, you know, from a general economic development perspective. Our community has to do everything it possibly can to set ourselves up to diversify our employment base gradually and increasingly away from our dependence on tourism. I mean, it is a, you know, it's a, it's a nice base of revenue. It's a, it's a good employment base. But it is really a challenging long term play for us if we cannot grow the non tourism employment base. So, you know, I think the, the, at the core of this question, and I appreciate Mr. Carmen and, and Mr. Brown's, you know, community mindedness. I think they, they've proven that over time. So, you know, I think they're, they're trying to think through this as well. But I, I think where I would come down on this myself is really in support of, of, of planning's decision because I think, you know, we, we do have to look very carefully at somewhat limited land opportunities that exist right now. And probably, you know, for the next decade and think about, you know, what is it that we can do as a city to try to maximize the potential for the outcome of those to really drive to that non tourism employment base. You know, I think the training opportunity while it's out there is, is really theoretical at this point. So I'm not sure that that in itself should warrant a decision. You know, if you look at how Cook and more recently Catalin have become real game changers for our community, that's the kind of outcome that I think we have to keep stimulating and keep pursuing. And I, I guess I would also, you know, respectfully suggest that while I understand that 37 has been certainly a, you know, a through road for the community. I would say that, that the advent of I-69, the connectivity that that creates between us and Crane, you know, so, so opening up flexibility to the south and, and, and really through traffic to the south in a way that we're wasn't as robust previously. But I do think that I-69 is a, is a pretty important development for Bloomington and, and especially as it gets connected to the north. We, you know, we know that there's been a lot of focus on ensuring that the interchanges on I-69 are curated to really reflect our community and the possibilities that they represent for our community. So, you know, it would be a little bit sad to see, you know, a bunch of generic, I mean, you know, I'm sure everybody's driven across Route 70 or wherever. And, you know, you, you pretty much every interchange sort of looks like another interchange. And, and I'm not sure that that really reflects what we're, what we're interested in as a community to, to, to have on our interchanges off 69. So this, you know, the proximity that this represents to one of those interchanges becomes all the more important. So, you know, I think what I would say is, again, you know, diversification is, is, is really, really important for Bloomington for the next 10 and 20 years. The cop plan, while I understand that it's, it's, you know, aspirational at some level is, you know, is the cop plan. And, and I kind of feel like we should stick to that plan to the extent that we can. And so, you know, the MC designation certainly would accelerate, you know, or potentially would accelerate development. I worry that development for its own sake is, is different than development that we absolutely would want to see. And I worry that the MC designation would, once you start allowing things under that, you know, then it's sort of game over for the, for the, for the lot. I'm not sure that you can pull back from that. So, so I would suggest we, you know, follow planning's recommendation and you know, and, and, and let, let time play out a little bit with, with the advent of I-69 and see if we can make this parcel work as hard as possible for Bloomington.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Mr. Gurlik. Is this, I'm, I'm trying to remember if this district, this is alone out there, right? This wasn't part of the consolidation of TIF districts, right?
No, to our knowledge, this was part of the consolidated TIF. So this is part of the overall area. Yeah.
This is all part of the overall area. Okay. So because I'm wondering about, you know, a future road there, which would be Weimar Road extension, correct? Is the, the petitioner, Mr. Carmen talked about a 2.6 million dollar road that would be essentially be required to extend Weimar to Fullerton?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that your understanding? Okay. And so obviously those, is it your understanding? What, what is, what is the general feeling about applying TIF funds for that infrastructure? I mean, we have a lot of competing interests within the TIF, right?
Well, certainly, I mean, certainly that's a, that's a question for the council to address within themselves, you know, if they feel like it is an appropriate designation or appropriation of TIF funds to fund the development within that.
Well, I maybe that it is getting the cart before the horse, but what is the planning department's feeling about by pursuing an employment center as, as opposed to mixed use corridor? Would we be applying TIF funds to, to extend that road? Would that be your recommendation or, or do you know?
Well, so, you know, I mean, neither, neither one of those zoning districts themselves would require TIF funds. Is that kind of what you're asking?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is facilitating an employment center as opposed to mixed use corridor. And since we've, you, you stated that the employment center is the better use. It's what the comprehensive plan points to. And so I'm, I'm wondering about how we achieve that in, in a way that, that doesn't leave this sort of an orphaned area in terms of, you know, pursuing that employment center.
Well, so certainly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I had a secondary question, but go ahead if you have a.
I mean, I guess certainly I was going to say that you have to weigh what is, what is the, the benefit for using public funds to to fund private development for that TIF. You know, mixed use employment and the employment center is supposed to draw in larger employment generating uses, which would ideally employ a great deal of the community base. So that could, you know, have a lot better impacts. You know, you look at some of the uses in the MC zoning district, while some of them, you know, might be somewhat high employment, you're not going to get, you know, a large scale employer, you know, with a Wendy's or a, you know, a restaurant or a vehicle repair, you know, those are not really providing an overall benefit to the community that may not justify, you know, the use of private or public funds to fund private development. Does that kind of get to that a little bit better?
Yes. Yeah. I'm sorry about the ambiguity of that. But this is a little more specific question. I wondered about, you referred to, and we know that there are a limited number of interchanges along I-69, Fullerton Pike being one of them. And Mr. Carmen was actually highlighting an area that I thought was pertinent, and that was maybe to your primary point at the beginning, which is that land uses are to be balanced so that they, they don't cannibalize one another in terms of, you know, their competition. And is that your contention here that this, because an employment center is it, it, this points to a employment center precisely because of all of the retail uses that are at various interchanges already existing. Is that, is that true?
Well, you know, certainly you've got a large aggregation of those. And I would say that, you know, that's a great example of when you zone for that, those are the types of uses that you get there. You know, that, that's what kind of happens in those areas. You know, you get the large retail, the restaurants. You know, so because those uses haven't been allowed at this site, you know, that's, that's why you're not getting those at this location and that, you know, you're selecting for the different uses that we want to see here, the, the larger employment generating uses.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay. Seeing none. Ms. Lacy, I'm sorry. Councilmember Smith.
I just had one for Mr. Gurlik. Given the fact that the parcel's been there for a long time and nothing's really happened. What factors do you think may spur somebody that might take advantage of the, you know, the employment center?
Well, so, you know, to, to kind of answer that, I guess, you know, that's where TIF funds could be something or, you know, tax abatement to some degree, you know, those are tools that the council has at their disposal if they want to, you know, kind of go above and beyond. You know, one, one of our concerns or, or, you know, positions has been, you know, using this and keeping this zoned as employment will ensure that this happens and that those uses come in that we want to see. You know, there's, there are, there's tons of land within the community zone for commercial uses, the MC zoning district. And, you know, what I was trying to illustrate with the slide of the comprehensive plan and where the employment centers are in that zoning district, it's very limited. You know, so there, there's not really a shortage of commercial uses that we feel is necessary within the community for the long term growth of the city. You know, we want employment uses and, you know, one of the things that we certainly recognize is that you need to have restaurant uses and maybe some other retail uses to help fill in some of the gaps. We've proposed an amendment to the mixed use employment district to try to open that up just a little bit to allow restaurants up to 5,000 square feet to allow for medium scale retail to try to fill in those gaps a little bit. But overall, you know, we want to try to keep the useless minimized to keep out some of those uses that would kind of feed away or take away from the land that's available for those bigger uses that we want to see here. Or that's necessary for the long term, you know, growth of, of the city. And that's what we're looking at, you know, we want to be aware of. And that's one of the things I've designated here is that this is a unique site. It's a large piece of ground adjacent to I-69. You know, we need to have land that's for employment uses for the long term, 20 year, 40, 60, 80, 100 year needs of the community.
May I ask, a follow up would be, are there other parcels of land along 69 near there that could be used for, you know, manufacturer would come in and say, I love Bloomington. One that we're looking at right now. Are there other options?
There are not really other vacant areas of the corridor along I-69 that would have a zoning that would allow for offices that aren't already encumbered with uses. You know, you look at the area around Third Street and Second Street. You know, there are not any undeveloped parcels in there. Certainly there's some area along Third Street, perhaps in Whitehall Plaza or other areas where, you know, you could further infill, but there are existing uses that are there. There are not any real, there are not any vacant tracts of land along I-69 besides this area here. And a little bit of area to the east of Southern Indiana physicians along Tap Road. But this is, this is the only real vacant lane we've got along I-69.
Thank you. And then may I ask, Mr. Carmen, one?
If you don't mind, let's wait for the second round. See if we have any other council members having questions. Okay. Councilmember Smith, looks like we got there quick, fast and in a hurry. So right ahead.
Well, that was, um, thank you, Mr. Carmen for the presentation. And I think what I want to ask is, I, I believe I understand that if it went to the scenario that it's an employment center, that, does that mean that Mr. Brown would have sold property to a manufacturer?
You broke up, auto broke up there. Didn't catch you. I'm sorry.
Sorry. If it would, if a manufacturer came in the area and wanted to buy that, wanted to develop that, that would mean that Mr. Brown would sell that to the manufacturer, correct?
Yes, right. He's, he's not the builder. No, he would, it would be a, a sell with the, billed by the buyer. Yes.
Okay. And can I ask this question? How much is the parcel worth to a manufacturer?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, okay.
I, I couldn't tell you on that. In terms of relative terms, I do know, and then we've seen demonstrated time, time again in other developments that commercial retail land for those uses sell at a lot better price than, than other uses, which is why the, the argument for the MC flexibility. But what those specific dollars are, I'd be just guessing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Carmen. And thank you, President Sims.
You're quite welcome. Seeing no other comments, I'm sorry, questions from council. We'll now go to the public. Ms. Lacy, do we have anything that you see?
Well, members of the public who would like to speak on ordinance on 2108 can use the raised hand function in Zoom or they can send a message to the meeting host. And I don't presently see any hands raised and there are no messages.
Hey, give it just a second. And seeing none, we'll return to council for a final comment if we have any. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. If I could just speak on behalf of the Plan Commission, this was an interesting conversation when this was first pitched to us. And the six to one vote was a bit controversial because I know the planning staff does not like us to send something to this body with no recommendation. They would prefer that we either send it with a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But I will say that one of the reasons why it became an interesting kind of a, you know, reasonable doubt put in our minds was there was, there were representatives from the BEDC at that time, and I do not see them in the meeting here tonight. And so I don't know if that means that they've pulled their, their, their concerns or their interests, but I'm sure that Mr. Crowley works very closely with Jen and the BEDC. I know my time when I was the liaison for the BEDC and I, this was a while ago when Ron Walker was still the director. I know one of the things that they talked about that it's hard to recruit major employers to this community. And a lot of times these major players were very competitive for them. And one of the things that they look for is shovel ready opportunities to come in. And so I think the conversation about the TIF districts and that road would be beneficial to Alex Crowley and the Economic Development Department, as well as the BEDC in attracting the kind of major employers, the corporate headquarters and the light industrial and the various employment centers that are going to provide good jobs with good salaries. And I completely agree that we do not want to encourage a bunch of service industry jobs. That's not the way we're going to improve Bloomington. And, and so this was a hard decision again for the Plan Commission to struggle with because when we were asking the reps from the BEDC, did they have any kind of projection? did they have any kind of projection about what they're looking at with respect to recruiting major employers to the community? And they indicated that they might be in the middle of doing some studies to kind of take a look at the economic market out there and, and see what the appetite was going to be for a major employment center. And that study was inconclusive. And so, again, they didn't really give us anything to hang our hats on, but they gave us enough to, to have reasonable doubt about, is this the right way to go to keep this open for the ME? When, what's on the horizon with respect to the pandemic and the economic downturn and everything else that we're looking at with respect to the economic environment? And so that just gives you just a little background as to where we were at that time with the Plan Commission and why we sent it to you all for a more robust discussion about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council members? Councilmember Smith?
Well, I'm pretty persuaded that this is a good idea. Pretty much based on, I, I just can't see that the momentum for an induc-, you know, an industry to come in to Bloomington and buy over there, they haven't done it in thirty-five years. It doesn't seem like there's any, any bites in the water. So I pretty, I favor this idea. And, and I think Mr. Brown and Mr. Carmen will keep an eye on it for Bloomington and, and there will be some jobs created there. Perhaps there'll be some light industrial, who knows? So that's about all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Seeing none, are we ready for the, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to, well, I want to say two things. There are two reasons why I'm opposed to this. The first is that it does go against what's in our comprehensive plan. And the second is kind of questioning the whole paradigm of, of development on the edges of our urban area. I just think that, that any development here is, is sprawl, basically. I mean, it is on the, the very, very southern part of, of our city and far away from where people live. And it'll definitely be a car-dependent development, whatever ends up there. So I'm not inclined to make it easier for anybody to develop that land. And, you know, with all due respect to Mr. Brown, who is a longstanding member of the community and has, has invested a lot in the community, this, I'm just not inclined to, to help something develop there. I think that this is, you know, investment dollars are better spent on development that is not so auto-dependent. So I wanted to add that to the reasoning this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further final comments from council? Okay, Councilmember Rallo.
I, I agree with Councilmember Piedmont Smith, and I would rather continue adhering to the comprehensive plan and be judicious about what locates here. I, I don't think that we need more small-scale retail in this area just simply for the sake of it. I think that Councilmember Sandberg made an excellent point in that regard. So I, I'll support planning and ESD and, and their judgment to maintain the, the ME. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carmen, do you have a hand up? I think we're in council final comments, so I'm not so. You do have your hand up?
If, if I'm allowed to speak, yes.
Well, I will recognize it, but it, please be brief.
Okay.
Very brief.
All right. I'm a speed talker, I'll get to it. Mr. Rallo made a comment on a prior petition about, he does not want necessarily PEDs get lost because that's a negotiation opportunity that you don't get in the straight zones. And, and I agree with that. And this is one of those cases. What you're relegated to now with giving away PEDs is the, what you would call reasonable conditions of approval. It's in the packet as a condition concerning the commitment concerning use of development real estate. Law allows it to be done. That becomes the negotiation. At the first Plan Commission meeting, it was certainly suggested by a couple of members, and we remember Brad specifically about maybe we need to have some negotiation, Tishner and Planning, about the uses that would be allowed out there. It didn't happen. We proposed a list of excluded uses. That's what Eric showed you early on his. And I got essentially nothing back from Planning. They're, they're focused on, they want the ME and they're not going to essentially talk about anything else. That's what it came down to. When I finally got a response from Eric, it was basically, well, there's not much I can say because what we don't want is what you do want, so it doesn't give us much to talk about. And that was the extent of the negotiation. And, and that's the problem because what you're doing, well, it is a problem because that's the only way you're going to deal with the concerns about miscellaneous small retail and things coming in there is they could be excluded by that statement of commitment. And you could do that. We've offered some. If you think there are others that should be excluded, that, that could be done as a condition, reasonable condition of approval. Because if you look at a lot of the ME uses that you're saying are allowed, things you're saying you don't want there, the ME is going to allow some of that. They're, they're permitted uses with ME. They're coming anyway. But that's not what we're promoting, that's not what we're trying to do, that's not what we're promoting, but that's the fact of the ME zoning. And, and so to wrap this up, and I, I just, I do think there has to be an element of fairness in what we're doing with this property. Mr. Brown's eighty-seven acres, a big chunk of it has been dedicated to public, to the public good. That's the Cars Conservancy area. And he may want to say, well, that's just too bad, your property has cars features on it. When he bought that property, a Cars Conservancy area wasn't even a twinkle in anybody's eye. But it's done. And that's, and that's something to live with. Now, and I complained before, to somebody before, and they, I was challenged on what I was talking about, about your tying Mr. Brown's hands. He's being told now, the TIF's not, I, I have no expectation the TIF's going to put the road in. It's not going to extend that. You've had years to do that, and it's not going to happen. The money's going elsewhere. And he's being told, you cannot develop this unless you put the road in because we can't carve off anything. And so you're, you're saying, land back it. And that's not fair. It's not right. And frankly, I think it's illegal. It's called a taking. When you're, when you regulate in a manner intentionally to prevent it from being used, that's a taking, and that's wrong too. And I would submit that the MC zone is appropriate. It is not in conflict with the comp plan. I would ask you to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmen. Do we have any other final comments? Okay, let's see. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, first, I have a brief question for Councilperson Sandberg. Councilperson Sandberg, did you say what your personal vote was on the Plan Commission? Were you an abstainer or, uh, I, I, I don't recall what your vote was.
On sending it to council with no recommendation? I was, I was in the majority. I was one of the six.
I see, yeah. I share Councilperson Sandberg's ambivalence, you know, and, and, you know, I think that my colleagues have made some, also made some good points. I do question Councilperson Piedmont Smith's assertion that she, she has said it, she said it in committee too, that this is sprawl. And I've, I've thought about that phrase for a bit. And I, I think, well, we, if we don't like sprawl, we have the ability to prevent it or do something different. You know, in theory, this doesn't have to be sprawl. If the area around it, I mean, we're looking at annexing neighborhoods directly west of the highway that are, you know, why would be, we be annexed unless they've been urbanized? Granted, they may be suburbanized, but they're still developed. So I, I didn't, I didn't quite understand that argument. But the question, I think, for me has been, will this road or any development out here somehow be less suburban, less sprawling than it would be otherwise if we make this change? And I must admit, I don't know that I have enough information even now to make that decision. I was the abstainer in committee. And like, I just, not that I particularly want to hold this. I just, even now, I don't know what the right answer is. I'm not entirely persuaded by Mr. Carmen's arguments. And I'm not entirely persuaded by the planning's arguments. I, I sort of eager to hear what the people have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that's where the abstaining rule comes in. Councilmember Flaherty?
Sure. Yeah, I plan to oppose passing this ordinance as I did in committee. I think the comprehensive plan, certainly you can point to some things that suggest flexibility or transformation and kind of, and try to craft that argument. But I mean, the future land use map in Exhibit Nine is, is very, very clear that this area should be reserved for ME and employment. We heard that from Mr. Crowley and Mr. Gurlik as well. And that, I mean, that's, the, the city is legally allowed to zone, zone certain areas of the city in it, to encourage the type of development and land use that we would like to see. I, I really don't think that's a taking of any kind. And, you know, regarding the construction of infrastructure, I mean, that's, that's what very, very large parcels gets you. I mean, we're not, we're not obligated to build that speculating that if we do, it might attract the right type of development that we will see return, you know, that will pay for an increment in, in tax revenue that will pay for the infrastructure cost. I said this in committee, Mr. Brown can make the same type of speculation and build the infrastructure with the assumption that we will develop and he will make money. But I just, I just don't think, in particular, on sort of a far edge of town like this that lacks connectivity, it, it's not really our job to be, to ensure that this develops as quickly or as soon as possible. If it takes another decade or two, you know, that's, that's just the nature of, of the market and, you know, the risks that come with purchasing large tracts of lands and sort of speculating about future use. I think everything the city has advocated for is entirely within its, you know, rights and in line with the comprehensive plan. So I just have not heard any compelling evidence to, or reasons in my mind to, to go against Steph's recommendation on this. So I'll be voting now.
Hey, thank you for those comments. Seeing no further comments, are we ready for the question? Okay, well, please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg? No. Rallo?
No.
Volin?
Abstain.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Scambalory?
No.
Sims?
No.
Flaherty?
No.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that fails one, seven, one. I do believe I've got that correct. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, we do have first readings or legislation for first readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance twenty-one eleven be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved in second in that ordinance. About to be like twenty-one eleven. Be introduced, read by the clerk by title and synopsis on the will of clerk. Please read.
Should, uh, would you like me to call the roll on that first?
Yes, please. Thank you. Not only would I like it, I would love, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance twenty-one eleven, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Updating and Harmonizing Portions of Title II of the Municipal Code. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance twenty-one eleven makes several changes to Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code to bring the title into line with changed statutes to clarify references and to harmonize current practices in the city code.
Thank you. We have other legislation for first reading?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Point of order, President, Mr. President, I think we could consider a motion for referral to a committee if it's the will of the council. I'm, I'm also actually going to ask for one of our council attorneys to weigh in if it's okay with you in relation to the ten-thirty rule and what constitutes council action for that purpose. Whether, uh, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm just not sure, offhand, how we've defined that or if we have a, yeah, I'm unprepared to answer that.
I am fine with that. As far as introductions, but I'm not so sure first readings are considered that. But Mr. Lucas or Ms. Lacy?
Well, Councilmember Volin had his hand raised. I don't know if he's got some, something to add on how the council's interpreted this in the past. I'll say that ten-thirty rule calls for a two-thirds vote of the council to take action past ten-thirty. So given that this is first reading for the three items, I suspect there won't be a problem with, with having two-thirds of the council support that. But was there another question you had, Councilmember Flaherty?
Just, I guess, a point of information on that, on that interpretation. So any, any referral to committee introduction by first reading, et cetera, would all require two-thirds majority at this point, does that?
I see you're asking beyond.
Any vote we take, basically.
That's a good question. I don't know that we've thought about that.
It seems like it would take two votes using this scenario. One to extend the meeting on that ordinance and then the other as a majority vote. Correct me if I'm wrong. And while we think about that, Councilmember Volin?
Yes, the, I'm pulling up city code again here, but traditionally, we've used this to prevent the second readings from continuing. But in this case, the issue is no legislation may be introduced for council action after ten-thirty PM without a two-thirds vote. So the introduction requires two-thirds, but referral of it to something does not. And in any case, because we're, thanks to Zoom and the pandemic, we're having an obligation to vote on every introduction, there's no need to invoke it. If, if for some reason an introduction is only five-four, that would fail. I don't think we've ever seen that. So. It's, it's fine. We can, we can proceed as we have.
Okay, are you?
I would, I would agree with Councilmember Volin, yes.
Okay. And are parliamentarians on board with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And before we move to the second ordinance in this reading, I, as president, would like to refer this to the committee of the whole. I also understand that the Land Use Committee's next meeting has been moved to the twenty-fourth. And I would further propose that the Land Use Committee meeting commence from five-thirty to seven PM and that the committee of the whole would start at, I want to say seven, but seven-ten PM sounds a little more appropriate. So, um, Councilmember Flaherty or parliamentarian, where were we when you asked the question? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, and this is kind of new for all of us with.
That's, oh, that's fine. I'm just trying to figure out where were we on this place?
That's right. I'm sorry, I can, I just wanted to note that per our recent Title II update in, in the, the ordinance, the, the president has the right to make a preliminary referral to committee, which is what I think, I believe you just invoked, although it would be proper for, for any member to, to move to the contrary if they so wish. But, uh, and, and, and also I'll just note with regard to scheduling times, we no longer need to include a time for a meeting when referring to committee of any kind. And the president is authorized to set those agendas, including the time going forward. I know that's a, a change as well. So I just wanted to note those two procedural matters. So I just wanted to note those two procedural matters.
Well, thank you. And I think when we discussed that title, that was made clear. And the land use committee being separate from the committee of the whole, I think, would require a time. Am I incorrect?
No, you're correct in that. I didn't mean to suggest that time won't be needed, simply that, you know, members making a motion shouldn't feel, on any committee referrals, other members as well shouldn't feel the need to include a time. I think it's okay to, and certainly in your, in your role, since you'll be the one setting that. Does that, I hope that makes sense.
Well, it does, but I think if there was a motion to do something else, then that would come with a time because it could go to variable committees. And that's something I think we could discuss moving forward. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, I'd actually like to make a motion to not send ordinance 2111 to committee at all.
Sorry. Mr. President?
Yes.
I might ask for additional guidance from our council attorneys. My, my impression is that a, a failure to send a committee or, either a standing committee or committee of the whole by vote would, would default to send it to second reading, which is what we did with ordinances 2109 and 10 tonight. But I'm not sure, I'm debating the appropriateness of a motion to send straight to second reading without a committee referral.
Well, that's what we did, and I recommend that it goes to committee of the whole. I understand your consternation here, but I think if his motion does not get a second, it's a moot point.
I need a second.
So now you, you, you want a second?
My second.
Okay, been properly moved and seconded.
Could, um, sorry.
Now we debate on this. Councilmember Flaherty, I got your point, but it needed a second to continue, I thought.
Sure, no, you're correct, and I appreciate that. So again, as a, as a point of order, I'm wondering if, if we have additional guidance from council staff on the appropriateness of a motion to not refer to committee in order to send it to second reading?
Yes, I, I think I can, and we have a code provision that says the council can agree by majority vote to discharge any committee from further consideration of any matter referred to it. I know this matter was referred seconds ago, and the committee hasn't considered it at all, but I think a majority vote of the council could, could decide what happens with legislation, you know, where it's referred or where it's not referred, if it's referred at all.
Okay.
Is it proper to now, based on this motion, to ask the clerk to call the roll? Yes, councilmember Volin?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to be able to explain my motion. Is it debatable, Mr. Lucas?
I believe so, yes.
Very briefly, while I have literally just tonight stated my opposition to committee of the whole, that's not what this motion is about. I happen to have spoken with City Legal about this ordinance because I have any concerns about Title II, and I am so not at all concerned about this ordinance, it's, it's really innocuous changes that I think the committee of the whole would dispose of very quickly and like, you know, other, like, like with, I mean, we, the utilities ordinances we considered tonight were much more substantial than this ordinance. And so I just don't think we need to send it to committee. I think it's fine to go to second reading, and that's okay. So that's, that's the spirit in which I'm offering this. I would say the same for the other two ordinances. I'll be moving, making the same motions tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Parliamentarian, where are we doing? Is this?
We're in debate, debate on the motion. So if there's no, if there's no other comments, then yes, a vote would be appropriate.
Any further comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
You have, you had, councilmember Scambalory raised your hand.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Councilmember Scambler?
Hi, thank you. I have actually a couple of questions on 2111 that I would like answered. And committee of the whole is a fine setting for doing it, and I'd rather do it before we get to second reading. So I would just offer that thought, I'll be opposing this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, can, will the clerk please call the roll on this motion? And if I need to repeat it, correct me if I'm wrong, councilmember Volin, this was to, a motion to bypass any committee referral and go straight to second reading.
Mr. Lucas said it was to discharge a committee from considering it all, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I can weigh in. I, I think a referral happened when the president announced.
It did.
Referring the item to committee of the whole. So I think this motion that you, you'd need to make is a motion to discharge the committee from, from considering the item.
That's my motion. Thank you.
Are you muted?
Who?
No, but my microphone was really far up on my head, my volanges. Just for clarification, when councilmember Volin made his motion, he said it was to not refer ordinance 21 to a committee reading. Is that what you all understand?
It's a motion to discharge it from referral to a committee. Motion to discharge.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so councilmember Rallo?
No.
Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Councilmember Scambalory?
No.
Councilmember Sims?
No.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
And councilmember Sandberg?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. The motion fails two, seven. It will be referred to committee of the whole as originally suggested. We have more first readings. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2112 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Been moved in second. Will the clerk please call the roll? She's still with us there, she is. Thank you.
I am, just catching up. Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and the motion carries nine, zero. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2112 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Restricted Turns on Red at Signalized Intersections. The synopsis is as follows, this ordinance amends Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code. The changes include adding several new signalized intersections to and correcting a number of existing signalized intersections on the table of locations with restricted turns on red.
Thank you. As president, I also would like to refer that to committee of the whole as well. And we will, are there any other motions in that regard? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I move to send this to the Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved in second, sent to the Transportation Committee. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm point of.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, it's getting late. I've not been here for a couple of weeks. Thank you. This is debatable, and we do have comments and questions and debate. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. The three co-sponsors are all on the Transportation Committee, so I would rather go to either committee of the whole or on to second reading.
Sorry, could you repeat that? You would rather go to committee of the whole or second reading?
Yes, yes, I think because, you know, three out of the four people on Transportation co-sponsored it, it, it makes more sense for the whole group to hear it next time.
Okay. Who's, okay, I'm, I'm with you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith made the motions, councilmember Volin seconded it. Gotcha. Any other debate? Councilmember Volin?
I was just going to say, because my motion to discharge failed, I saw no point in making that same motion this time. I agree with councilmember Rosenbarger that going to Transportation is not ideal, but I also think that this one doesn't even need to go to committee either, but whatever. I disagree again with the liberal use of committee of the whole. Thank you.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, I would like to withdraw my motion. I didn't realize that there were three co-sponsors on this legislation, that we're all members of the Transportation Committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty, does the president's referral to committee of the whole now stand?
I, I believe it would. My, my only question is actually, can it properly moved and seconded motion that's being debated be withdrawn by the sponsor? Sorry that I don't know this offhand. I'll defer to Mr. Lucas.
I, I think technically it's the council's motion at that point. If, if the council wants to handle it by unanimous consent, if there's no objection to the withdrawal, I think that's, that's a fine procedure. If there is an objection, I think it takes a majority vote to withdraw it.
Okay, I think there may be, so. Do we have any objections to the sponsor of this motion pulling it off the board? Okay, thank you. Ordinance 21-12 referred to the committee of the whole. Councilmember Flaherty, we have one more piece of first reading legislation.
Yes, President Sims, I move ordinance 2113 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion rules has been moved and seconded, that ordinance 21-13 be introduced and read by the clerk entitled by, and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Yes, ordinance 2113 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Chapters 1232080, Schedule M, No Parking Zones, to Remove Three No Parking Zones and Add Ten No Parking Zones, and to amend Chapter 1532100, Schedule O, Loading Zones, to Add Two Loading Zones. The synopsis is as follows, this ordinance amends Title 15 Vehicles and Traffic of the Bloomington Municipal Code and comes forth at the request of city staff and the Parking and Traffic Commissions. The ordinance makes the following changes, it deletes three no parking zones on Sixth Street, it adds ten no parking zones in the Renwick area, and it adds two loading zones.
Thank you very much, and as can be anticipated, I would like to refer that to committee of the whole as well. Again, land use committee meeting next Wednesday of the 24th, I'm sorry, yeah, the 24th, will begin at 5:30 and last until 7:00 PM. As we're talking tonight, then the committee of the whole can commence at 7:10 PM. Thank you. Moving on down the agenda, do we have any additional public comment this evening? This is allotted a maximum of 25 minutes, has been set aside for this section. Please indicate your desire to make a public comment by using the raised hand function in Zoom or sending us the host a message in chat. Ms. Lacy, do you see anything?
There are presently no hands raised, and I don't have any messages in chat.
Okay, thank you. We'll give it just a second. Just want to make sure we're very respectful and collegial with our public. Thank you. Seeing none. We'll now address matters of council schedule. Is that you, Mr. Lucas, or you, Ms. Lacy?
I can, I can address that if you'd like. The council has a work session scheduled for this Friday. At the moment, I don't believe there are any new items of legislation that would be ready to come forward during the next legislative cycle that would start April the 7th. There may be one item that, that will be ready, that's a Title 18 repeal and replace, but the council heard about that at a work session several weeks ago. That item at the moment is being reviewed by the State Commission, and that won't be ready to come forward until the State Commission has weighed in. So that's the only item that may be coming forward that cycle, a new item. So given the lack of any new business for this Friday's work session, the council might want to consider a motion to cancel that, that work session this Friday.
Mr. President, I move that we cancel the work session for Friday, March 18th.
Second.
Thank you, it's been properly moved and seconded. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I believe that would be.
It's March 19th.
19th, sorry, 19th.
Council, oh, that was the correction, Councilmember Piedmont, okay. For this Friday to cancel. Do we have any comments from colleagues? Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry about that. Yes, councilmember Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, and that passes nine, zero. Work session for 3:19, is that the correct date? Yes, has been canceled. I do not believe there's any other business. Are there any other businesses available? Yes, Mr. Lucas?
Just a few, a few more reminders because this will be the last regular session of March, the 5th, Wednesday in March, March 31st, there is no meeting scheduled for that date. I also want to take the chance to, in case any folks interested in the Jack Hopkins process are watching or will be watching, there's a technical assistance meeting that will be held tomorrow, I believe at 4:00 PM for any applicant, applicants for, for that grant. That'll be held over Zoom. The information is on the Jack Hopkins website. I also want to state that the deadline for applications for that process was moved from April the 2nd, which fell on spring holiday, which is a city holiday, was moved from that Friday until April the 5th. So that gives any applicants, if, if they're watching at 11 o'clock tonight, a few more days and the opportunity to still drop off applications in person, since City Hall will be closed on April the 2nd. So just with those few reminders, that's all I've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other business? Seeing no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
We adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Can we, oh, that's the clerk. Can we just say, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Is that, is that proper? Okay, all those opposed? Thank you. I'll get a lecture from that from our previous parliamentarian tomorrow, but that's okay. It's been a good night. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.